Morning, everybody. Should I bang the gavel? It's more fun if I do. Welcome. It's Thursday, October 16th, and we're in the Land Use and Transportation Committee. I'm Ryan Dorsey. I'm the Chair of the Committee and Representative of the 3rd City Council District. We have four bills on the agenda today, and we have some members of the Committee and others here with us today. To my left, we have Vice Chair of the Committee and Vice President of the City Council, Sharon Green Middleton from the 6th Council District. How you doing?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good morning. To far left, we have Councilman Zach Blanchard from the 11th District. To my far right, we have Councilman Paris Gray from the 8th District. To his left, we have Councilmember Mark Parker from the 1st District. To my right, we have Mr. Tony Leva, Staff of the Committee. Good morning, Tony. We also have with us Councilwoman Odette Ramos in the chambers. Hello, good morning. And members, representatives of the Mayor's Office, various city agencies, and other staff here, and we have members of the public with us today. Good morning. We also have folks viewing online. We have four bills before us today. We are going to begin with the one bill that is a property site-specific bill, Council Bill 25-0082, Planned Unit Development Amendment under Armour Headquarters. This bill was heard a few weeks ago initially, and the two things that were left as kind of orders of business to tend to here were the finding of facts on the bill and the resolution of amendments. We have amendments here for the bill, and we have written findings of fact that were submitted by the applicant and the applicant's representative, Caroline Hecker, Rosenberg Martin Greenberg. Councilmember Blanchard, would you like to just... You could, right here, we'll take amendments from right here if you want to talk to the amendments or say anything else about the bill real quick before we do that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the two amendments that are before you are two of the same three that were here last time. If my colleagues remember, there was a conversation on one of the amendments would have allowed for a private school specifically, but not also allowed for a public school. That amendment has been removed, or that provision has been removed. So, the amendments now allow for a public or a private school. Everything else is the same as what we discussed two weeks ago.
Are there any questions for the sponsor of the bill and sponsor of these amendments? There being none. Law Department. Law Department has reviewed the amendments?
Yes, Desiree Lucky, on behalf of the Law Department, we've reviewed the amendments and approved for form and legal sufficiency.
Great, thank you. Planning Department, you've also looked at the amendments?
Yes, no objection.
Okay, great. Anything from the Mayor's Office to say about them? No?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, great, thank you. Is there a motion to vote favorable on the amendments? Great, the amendments have been moved, all in favor of recommending these amendments favorable. Say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Abstentions? None? Great. The amendments are moved favorable. We will move on to findings of fact. I will invite Caroline Hecker up to offer findings of fact.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Caroline Hecker, Rosenberg Martin, on behalf of the applicant. At the last hearing, we submitted a six-page memo that went through the detailed findings of fact that the Committee and the City Council are required to make in connection with a PUD amendment. We had gone through these in a lot of detail at the Planning Commission hearing. It took about 40 minutes to go through all of them, and I don't think you all want to go through all of that this morning. So, I'm sure that you've had a chance to review the memo that we submitted the last time. I think maybe what I'll do is just sort of hit the big things. At heart, a PUD amendment and a PUD itself is technically a conditional use that the City Council is approving, and when the City Council approves a conditional use, there are four specific big findings that it has to make. The first is that the establishment, location, construction, maintenance, or operation of the conditional use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or welfare. Here, you know, this amendment is clearly in the, you know, the public interest. It furthers public health, safety, and welfare. It allows for the establishment of a new school in Locust Point. You know, we've been in extensive discussions with the Locust Point Civic Association who support it, so, you know, we think we meet that factor. It's not precluded by any other law, including an urban renewal plan. This is not located in an urban renewal area, and it is not precluded by any other law. The Council has to find that the authorization would not be contrary to the public interest. Here, again, this is supported by the Locust Point Civic Association. It is in the public interest. And finally, that the authorization is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the zoning code. And specifically, you know, the code states that its purpose is to preserve and enhance the value of structures, communities, and neighborhoods. Here, this is going to allow for the adaptive reuse of an existing building in Locust Point, supporting the community and the neighborhood and the city as a whole, so we think we meet that factor as well. And again, we would submit on the memo that we submitted in writing at the last time that I'm sure you've had the chance to review. I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Are there any questions about the finding of fact? Okay, great. Thank you, Caroline. I make a motion that the Committee adopt the findings of fact and recommend them to the full Council. All in favor of adopting the finding of fact, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Opposed, rather abstain? Okay, great. The findings of fact will be recommended to the Council to adopt. Is there any public testimony on this bill? None? Great. This bill hearing and vote is concluded on 25-0082. It will be recommended favorable with amendments at the next City Council meeting on Monday. Thank you. Did we not vote on the bill?
No.
Sorry. Geez. Hey, look, I'm a little tired here. Good morning. Shall we vote to recommend the bill favorable? Is there a motion? The bill has been moved favorable with amendments. We will take a roll call vote. Thanks, everybody, for keeping me in check here.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Vice President Middleton?
Yes.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter, is he absent? Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Blanchard?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Six in favor, one absent.
The bill is moved favorable, voted favorable. It will be recommended as such to the Council at the next meeting. I knew it felt weird when I said it the first time. We will move next to Council Bill 25-0040, Zoning Uses Retail Small Box Establishment. Before we begin on this bill, there were... This and the subsequent two bills that we will hear today were already heard in... I don't have the dates in front of me, but these bills were advertised and heard by the Committee. They were recessed. They were brought back for a voting session at a later date, and in some cases, amendments were adopted, and the bills were voted favorable to the City Council. And then, when they came to the City Council, we took a motion to recommit these bills to the Committee, just in an abundance of interest in doing all possible diligence and to request some additional bill reports and to hear them. So, the purpose of today's hearing is to just gather that additional information, so we will hear those bill reports, and if there is a comment or testimony specifically on those bill reports, we will take that. This is not a full rehearing of the matter. So, we will begin with Council Bill 25-0040, Zoning Uses Retail Small Box Establishment. Are there any... Vice Chair Middleton, are there any additional amendments or anything for this bill?
No.
There are no additional amendments for this bill? Great. Since we've already heard the bill, I'm just going to go straight to our agency reports. Department of Transportation.
I'm sorry, but we weren't referred this bill.
You were. You submitted a report. You were referred the bill, and you submitted a report.
I'm sorry. We stand by our favorable bill report.
Great, thank you. The Zoning Board, BMZA?
Morning, Mr. Chair. Tyler Chanel, Mayor's Office, on behalf of the BMZA. BMZA stands by its report of no objection.
Great. Committee members, are there any questions or comments for DOT or BMZA? Are there... Is there public testimony on the DOT or BMZA reports on this bill? None? Okay, great. I think that this is probably for the wrong bill. They probably signed the wrong sheet. Yeah, they're here for this one. We did have Umuja sign up to testify on this one, but I think that's probably for different bills. Mr. Umuja?
Yes.
Yeah, you signed up to testify for this bill, but I think that you actually mean to be testifying on other bills. Okay. Great, there's no public testimony on this bill. Is there a motion to vote favorable on this bill?
Mr. Chair?
Sorry. Is there... Do we have comments from the co-sponsor of the bill, Councilwoman?
Just a question.
Yes.
The Committee already voted on the amendments, and so is the...
We've been advised by the Law Department. I spoke to Hillary right before we began today that any amendments that we've already voted to recommend favorable, we don't have to vote again on the amendments, that we will take a motion here to vote the bill favorable as amended.
As amended, great. Okay, just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Okay, great. So, is there... And there were amendments that were voted previously. Is there a motion to vote favorable on the bill as amended? It has been moved. Tony, let's do a roll call. Okay, I'm sorry. We have... I'm going to take a... Make a motion here to just table this vote for a moment so that we can actually take the public testimony. All in favor of tabling the vote for a moment? Say aye. Aye. Mr. Umuja, come on. Again, Mr. Umuja, we... The purpose of this hearing today was just for us to get additional testimony or reports from the Department of Transportation and the Zoning Board, who have given their bill reports to just say that they're in favor of the bill. We have already had the general hearing on this bill. Do you have comments pertaining to the DOT report or the BMZA report specifically?
I wanted to talk about you pushing the dollar bill through, the dollar store bill through, because I was confused about it, because I know I said I agreed upon it, but it was a restricted bill concerning a part of the neighborhoods adjacent to Coldstream Homestead and Montebello, whereas our council person wants to deal with a bill dealing with the dollar stores in an area, whereas dollar stores are not even conducive for that area, because there's no place for dollar stores in that particular area. But our council person is willing to debase Coldstream Homestead and Montebello with vape stores.
I'm sorry. I'm not going to abide by having my colleagues on the City Council derided with terms like...
Say it again?
I'm not going to allow members of the City Council to be debased with terms like "debased."
My neighborhood being debased.
I know, but you've specifically asserted that your council person is somehow participatory in allowing that or making that happen, and I'm not going to have...
It's not just the council person.
I'm not going to allow council members to be derided in this chamber, okay?
But it's not just her. It's possibly the whole chamber. It's the thing is, we're trying to do something with our neighborhood and...
I hear you. Today, we're holding a hearing to take testimony on the DOT report or the BMZA report. Do you have comments specifically about the Department of Transportation's report on the bill or the Zoning Board's report on the bill?
If... I think that if you start off with something that's incorrect and doing something that's purposely incorrect, the whole thing is incorrect. So, when you start off with the DOT and all of that that you're doing, that is no good for our neighborhood. You shake your head. When you do start that thing, what it is, it's no good, because what she is doing, whether I'm saying something against her, the whole thing is wrong.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, but I'm trying to figure out why is our council person, when we talk to her about something about our neighborhood and explain to her something about our neighborhood, and she took what we said about our neighborhood and took it somewhere else.
So, Mr. Chair, I can just clarify that what we would like to do is have a similar bill around the vape shops, which I had explained, that one of my colleagues and I have been talking about it already, and that this bill is designed for dollar stores and that there's another thinking around the vape shops for later. So, that has caused some consternation with the neighborhood, even though, you know, we have said that we're going to do it, we're just not doing it in this bill.
Great, thank you. I think that clarifies the matter. So, this is a bill about one thing, and it's not about another thing that there could be, and seems like there is an intention to have a bill about. This bill cannot be about more than just dollar stores. It's not possible. There's not a legal grounds for this bill to address anything other than dollar stores or small box retail. Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Umuja.
Wow.
Thank you for your testimony. We are going...
You're not welcome.
Thank you. We're going to go back to the vote. Again, is there a motion to vote favorable on the bill with the amendments? The bill is moved favorable with amendments. Tony, let's take a roll call vote.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Vice President Middleton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bullock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter, absent. Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Blanchard?
Yes.
Councilmember Parker?
Yes.
Six, one, one for absent.
We have six in the affirmative, one absent, and so the bill will be recommended favorable with amendments at the next Council meeting on Monday. Great. We will move on to Bill Number 25-0064, Zoning Bulk and Yard Requirement... Requirements Amendments. We have bill reports from the Zoning Board and Department of Transportation. Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Christian McNeil, DOT. We stand by our favorable bill report.
Thank you. BMZA?
Tyler?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Tyler Chanel, Mayor's Office. BMZA stands by their report.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the Committee for DOT or BMZA? I'll take care of that. BMZA offered up two technical amendments to the bill. Do you want to speak to them? I can cover them. It's easy. All right, great. We have two technical amendments from BMZA. Essentially, these are both correcting typographical errors, nothing more than that. The... On page four of the bill and line 21 in the fourth column, the bill is written as if the current number there is 50 and says, get rid of 50, strike 50 and substitute 70, when in fact, the code currently says 70 there. So, it was an error to represent it as if it says 50. So, in essence, the first reader bill would anyway just amend it to be exactly as it already is. So, it's just a typo there. And then, Amendment Two, on page five and line one in the sixth column, strike six and substitute a superscript six. Again, typographical error. It meant to be making a footnote reference and was not stylized as such. Law Department, okay with these?
Yes, we approve for legal forms.
All right, great, thank you. These are totally technical in that way, or corrective in that way. I'll move these BMZA amendments favorable. Are there... We'll just take a voice vote. All in favor of approving the BMZA amendments, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Okay, great. We will take public testimony, and then we have some additional amendments. Let's see here. What's that? We have heard the BMZA and the DOT reports. This bill, just like the last bill, is a limited rehearing so that we could accept these reports and consider them, should there be any concern about them. We didn't have any committee questions about those reports, but if we have public testimony on those reports, we will take it now. And we have Joan Floyd is signed up to testify. Joan, well, you'll have two minutes. Hit that right button on the...
We need you.
Joan, can you press the button on the...
I'm sorry.
And just tell us who you are before you begin.
Excuse me?
Just tell us who you are before you begin.
My name is Joan Floyd, and we need to get real. Civil servants and elected officials cannot continue to hide from the truth of what this bill actually does. It's just reading and math. Do the reading and math. Until you do that, you cannot apply the standards that state law and our own zoning code require of these proposed text amendments. The new BMZA memo is wrong. It fails to acknowledge that the side yard requirement is eliminated, not just reduced, for multifamily attached, which is what facilitates the expansions that will take place by right. Fails to acknowledge that the rear yard requirement is eliminated, not just reduced on many R8 locks. The same person who sat on the Planning Commission and said R8 doesn't need its rear yards is now writing the BMZA memo and not acknowledging that elimination. The new DOT memo is absurd. It talks about BMZA variances and street trees, but it doesn't discuss the impact on the streets of increased density for tens of thousands of residential properties. DOT is literally responsible, under the code, for estimating future parking needs. That issue doesn't even get mentioned. Is everyone afraid of the truth? I've never seen anything like this in 25 years. We used to be able to discuss what a zoning amendment actually says and does, and then talk about whether it promotes health, public safety, general welfare, provides adequate light and air, prevents environmental pollution, facilitates adequate public facilities, properly manages growth and development, properly manages growth and development, things that zoning regulations must be designed to do. Disrupting the status quo is not a legitimate purpose. Even our zoning code tells you to protect quality of life and preserve the value of neighborhoods. I've been hearing complaints even from sponsors of this bill against these purposes of zoning, but they're in the state code and the local code, and they must be applied to this process, and they are being disregarded. The situation is chaotic. The bill needs to be tabled. There is work to be done in cooperation with the citizens of Baltimore, and this bill is not it.
Thank you, Ms. Floyd. Jody Landers.
Good morning. Jody Landers, member, resident of the 3rd District. Unlike Ms. Floyd, many of us in the audience have not heard what the reports are. So, I would like to make a request to the Committee. If, in fact, this hearing is going to be limited to comments on the reports, I think the reports should be read in the public session so that we can then tailor our comments to the report. Otherwise, there are amendments being voted on and a glib statement that said from the agencies, "We stand by our report." We haven't heard the report, ladies and gentlemen. I think in the interest of full disclosure and transparency, you need to state what the report is in public, read it, and then allow this hearing to go forward with comments on the report. Thank you.
Thank you.
And by the way, there's precedent for that. Many, many Committees in the City Council read the reports.
Thank you. He's not in the room. We'll go to Mark Washington.
I just want to concur with my friend and colleague, Ms. Floyd, and what Mr. Landers said.
Can you just tell us who you are real quick?
Sorry. Mark Washington, Executive Director, Coldstream Homestead and Montebello Community Corporation. I just want to concur with Ms. Floyd and Mr. Landers. Taking legislative action obviously requires responsibility. You all are well aware of that. The responsibility is not only to the few, but it's to the greater number that we serve. And serving those constituents in Baltimore City means that that responsibility is something that shouldn't be taken lightly. Making sure that you have informed constituents, making sure that they completely understand what is transpiring in these chambers is vitally important to having what I believe a city that's forward-thinking and forward-moving. So, I just wanted to reiterate, you know, what was said previously and just to say to you all, let's be, you know, judicious, thoughtful, and considerate when we make these decisions, because the impact is on real lives. Last thing I'll say on this, there have been a number of things that have been considered best practices in the past that time has proven that have been disastrous decisions, and so that's why I've mentioned looking forward and being forward-thinking with what we do.
I'm not going to read the entire BMZA report, but I do take into... But I do take into consideration the point. I will read the summary statement, because I think it is a summary of everything else that BMZA has put into their report. It says, "Based on BMZA's caseload data, staff anticipates these amendments would result in a meaningful reduction in variance applications related to lot coverage, side yard, and corner side yard requirements in residential districts." That is the... Essentially, the summary statement that BMZA makes in their analysis.
What about their analysis?
Tyler, would you like to give any other further summary statement on the BMZA's report?
Yeah, sure. I mean, the, and just for the committee, obviously, the, when we submit agency reports, I do know that they get posted in the hearing packets that make their way to Legistar. I do appreciate the comments from the public, and as the person responsible for making sure that our agencies do submit the reports to the council, going forward, I'll be sure to instruct our agency government affairs teams to come prepared with a summary, which they can, but we typically do not read entire bill reports in the council because we operate on the understanding that we've given them to the respective, you know, committee, and the committee staff have posted them publicly. So for BMZA, essentially, they, the report really hinges upon the BMZA workload and how, you know, this bill with the balkenyard requirements will ease some of that burden on the BMZA, and they talk about, it's a very short report, instances where, you know, the changes would, you know, remove the need to seek zoning relief for certain lot conditions that currently require variance approval, shorten development timelines by allowing more projects to proceed by right rather than through the variance process, create a diversity of housing opportunities by making more lots developable without board action, and reducing barriers to homeownership and housing development by eliminating procedural hurdle for common development scenarios. And then obviously, the BMZA did, you know, in doing their report, offer technical amendments which this committee has already accepted.
Thank you. And I'll note also that Ms. Floyd was able to review the reports, I believe, because they were posted online yesterday. So they are and were available to the public in advance of the hearing today. So, with that, we have a couple of other amendments to the bill. I'm sorry, we do have the sign-up sheet. It does have a column for people wishing to actually testify on the bill versus just stating their opinion. As I've done in the past, for those who did not check the box saying that they actually want to testify, I will give you the opportunity to. And so, just in caution for that, I will call for Ted Comas. Did Ted Comas intend to testify on the DOT or BMZA reports?
Good morning. My name is Ted Comas. I live in the Chum, in the Chum organization on Goshess Avenue, that's where I live at. And I'm a homeowner. And with this bill that you all are trying to pass, I'm a homeowner. Next door, I have, I have an investor who have a property next to me. So what you're telling me is that you're going to allow him to come in and add more, more apartments to his investment, which we're going to create more trash. Right now, there are vacant houses on my block. Land, you can't even get the landlord to come in and clean it up. I have to call for someone to come in to get this cleaned up. And these are, and you have investors that have people who are renting, and the renters don't even care about the neighborhood. I'm in the back alley cleaning up by myself. I'm a homeowner. I have investment. And when you give this, pass this bill to other people, are they going to rent out the whole house to, to a family? Or they're just going to chop it up into rooms where they'd be able to get more money? I'm totally against it. I love this city. I grew up in New York City, and I've been in Baltimore for over 35 years. This is the first time I ever came into this, into this building here. And I was living in Baltimore County, and I came back to the city because I was renting out my house to someone, and everything went haywire. So now I'm living in this city, cleaning up this city, helping. And I think passing this bill is not going to do any justice to the city. You got vacant property all around the city, vacant lot that, that's there, that's blighted, dumping everything. So what's next? What, what, what are you all doing? Is this about money?
Thank you, Mr. Comas.
Thank you.
Ms. Betty Bland Thomas.
I don't have my glasses on. Is it morning or afternoon?
It's morning.
Good morning, everyone, chambers and persons that are here. My name is Betty Bland Thomas. I'm the president of a neighborhood that has history. It's called Historic Sheriff Lattenhall. I also sit on the resident advisory board as well, and I'm a member of the Inclusionary Housing Committee. With that being said, I wanted the chamber to know that I do oppose this bill. My main concern, I hadn't read the report, and if you're going to take out the ability for individuals to object to a permit and not have a discussion with that neighbor or that next-door neighbor property owner, some of these variants warrant discussion. That's what the zoning department is all about. So I do support the past three persons who spoke out to object, but I do want to let you know that in my neighborhood, which and I live very close to my city council person, it's a very dense area and houses are very narrow. And so when we talk about extending to your backyard, you could greatly impact the neighbor's backyard across from your backyard. They have to have some walkable distance in case of a fire in their house to be able to exit the rear of their property. So this citywide elimination of opportunities for individuals to object to someone wanting to extend it because it's going to compromise their safety, I think takes away the safety ability of us as individuals. It might work very well in other neighborhoods that have more space and they have the ability to extend beyond that, but my neighborhood is a floodplain. My neighborhood has seniors. My neighborhood has very narrow width housing, and so it could really cause some major problems. And I think the zoning board needs to do its due diligence and hear us out when these permits, you know, come aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would like to now testify since you've made a statement and read part of the report.
I will allow it because I think it's reasonable and fair. Although, I will again reiterate, the reports were online yesterday, available for the public to review. That is how other members of the public were able to review them. I'm sorry that didn't happen.
And let me say, I mean, I'm responding to the report. We did not hear the Department of Transportation report, but I'd like it to be clear in the record that the chairman stated out loud, he will not read the report in total. He will only read the summary. We still haven't heard the Department of Transportation.
It is also online, sir.
I want to respond to the report as stated by the mayor's representative here. What he said in the report is that part of the motivation for this, and the reason they support it, is to ease the burden on the BMZA. The burden on government is to serve the citizens, not to make it easy for the work that these agencies are performing. The part of the reason for the requirements in having a hearing and not allowing these provisions to go as a matter of right is not only to serve the person who's applying for the permit, it's to serve the neighborhood and the residents who are adjacent to the property that's affected. That's why we have this process. Yes, it can be a burden, but it's intended to be a burden to make sure that the voices of both the applicant and the surrounding neighbors are heard and taken into consideration. That's part of the problem with the way these bills are proceeding. When the report is posted the day ahead of the hearing, and then we as citizens come and are told in the hearing, the hearing is only limited to comments on the reports that were posted the day before. Ladies and gentlemen, that is not open government. That is not serving the citizens of Baltimore. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Landers.
This hearing is a sham. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, DOT would like to go over their report.
If you wish.
BC DOT?
Though, again, the report is online.
I know.
We received the report here. We were able to consider the report as council members. It was posted online at the same time that we got it. It was able to be considered by the public.
We still would like to go over it. BC DOT has reviewed the proposed legislation and does not anticipate any immediate fiscal or operational impact resulting from the changes. The removal of minimum off-street parking requirements is expected to reduce
Wrong bill.
For 65, right?
64.
Oh, we didn't have.
Man, come on.
We can move on, Mr. Chair.
I appreciate it. We have one, just since I went down the list of folks who had not checked, Michelle, did you want Michelle a favor? Did you want, okay. We have somebody online who wishes to testify on this bill.
Yes, it's Deb O'Neill.
Great, Deb O'Neill. You have the floor. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I live in Ridgely's Delight, and I helped neighbors send in, about 20 neighbors sent in a letter of opposition. I've lived here for 35 years. I guess I just want to start out by saying it would have been very helpful to understand the rules before coming into this meeting. I went online and read the information about, you know, how these things are supposed to proceed. If there is going to be limited information of being allowed to be presented by the public, that should be made obvious to us before we come in so that we can be properly prepared. Having said that, I, I, I'm quite concerned that what is driving BMZA's recommendation is their reduction in workload versus the mission of their agency. I worked for the federal government for 35 years, and I frankly have never heard that as an excuse for why we should basically not pay attention to our mission because it reduces our workload. And that is essentially what I heard in that recommendation. So I want to just reiterate support for what I believe it was Ms. Floyd said, and for what everybody else has said. I do want to mention, we have had an extreme amount of development in our small historic portion of North Ridgely's in the last 10 years. What has happened is that we have had flooding because the storm drains cannot keep up with it. Our green space, we have not had huge amounts, but it has been further reduced by the development. I cannot even imagine what's going to happen when there are no controls, and these are developments that went through a process. I can't imagine what's going to happen. The city needs to look at this more holistically and decide whether we can. People who live here, the quality of life, our health and safety.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neill.
You're welcome.
Jed Weeks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jed Weeks with Bike More in Action. I just, looking at the bill reports, I just, you know, I did read them. I thought they were good, and I think they further support the passage of the bills before you today. I just wanted to remind the committee that over 90% of the public testimony received to date is in support of this legislation. And so if we are talking about serving the citizens of Baltimore, I think reflecting their intent in passing the legislation would be the appropriate move. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our public testimony on the bill. We do have a couple of amendments in the packet. I'll just review, since there are several. The first amendment from Councilmember Gray was voted on and was voted favorable to be recommended at the previous hearing on the bill, so we will not need to vote that one again. The second amendment from Councilwoman Middleton, would you like to say anything about it? You want to say anything? Oh, I'm sorry, we did not have any additional people signed up to give testimony. Sure. Ma'am, would you pull the microphone down so you can be heard, and then tell us who you are? I will take this.
Ms. Betty, she signed up in the wrong spot.
Got you, no problem.
Yeah, wrong spot.
Got it, no problem.
Okay.
Tell us who you are and...
Oh, my name is Betty Leek, and I, I'm complaining about the, they're taking the single homes, and then they're breaking them down to like 10 and 11 people are living in these single homes now. And it's more trash, it's more noise, it's just, it's a nuisance to the neighborhood. So that's what my complaint is. I've been in the neighborhood ever since 1957, and now there is like three bedrooms. Now you've got 10 bedrooms or 10 baths and things like that, and it's really, it's really congested, you know, and it's just more trash, it's just more everything. So, I beg your pardon?
I said, thank you.
Oh, okay, that's it?
I just want to follow. Ms. Betty makes this abundantly clear at every community meeting. So she wanted to come down here and speak to you all.
Thank you.
Because it was a single-family rural home.
Yes.
That is now a 10-room.
10 people are living, it's like a halfway house, like, but it's not only on Rob Street, it's in the whole, it's like on Garrett, Cecil, Kirk, they're doing that now. We started off, like I said, three bedrooms. Now it's like five and six in each, you know, you know, empty house when they come in and start developing it. And it's just, it's getting really congested.
And the last thing was, is that she's seen a negative impact on her property.
Oh, yes, yes, it has. Yes, it has.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I'm okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Now just hit the mic button. Thanks. Okay, great. All right, great. We have amendment from Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have an amendment that, basically, it's a process. I think it has been known that I'm against Bill 250064, and I had signed on initially until I listened to the testimony of the bill at the previous hearing, and this is just an official process to remove my name as in opposition of the bill. And I would like to move my bill, my amendment.
Great. It's been moved. All in favor of Councilwoman Middleton's amendment, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Abstain. Okay, the amendment will be recommended favorable to the council. There is a planning commission amendment that was voted favorable at the last council meeting. We have several amendments today from Councilmember Parker. Councilmember Parker, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Many thanks to Councilperson Gray for bringing forward 25...
Many thanks to Councilperson Gray for bringing forward 2564 for our consideration. For my colleagues, I sent an email at the beginning of the hearing in case you want to follow along or reference any of the data that I'm going to use. So in case that's helpful, it's sitting in your email for now, or for light reading later. I'm going to, I'm really grateful, really appreciate the opportunity to engage deeply on the bill with our committee, as well as in conversation with the author, and the chair, and colleagues, and of course, with lots of feedback from community members. The three amendments I have, I really wanted to drill down on some of the R8 changes and propose some tweaks to them, not out of disagreement with the general thrust or desired impact of the bill, but just to modulate them a little bit to, I think, what will have a better result for the community. In particular, R8 zoning neighborhoods, R8 neighborhoods are the dominant form of zoning in the first district, and also heavily featured in Councilperson Blanchard's district, and in Councilperson Bullock's district, as well as Councilperson Jones and Councilperson Glover kind of have the bulk of those, kind of the historic rowhouse neighborhoods surrounding downtown. Those are also the dominant zoning type in our most dense communities. And we're talking about density, we're trying to achieve density, we're trying to encourage density and growth across our city, and these also happen to be, by their very nature, our most dense communities already, which you saw reflected in some of the reports we had from planning and elsewhere. My three amendments are designed to further the goals of the bill, which is to allow for significantly more density in R8 areas by right, and give homeowners and private companies a flexibility to do new and different things in R8 zoning, so as to decrease vacancy, bring more units onto the market, and help our neighborhoods grow. And I'd suggest that my amendments offer a more reasonable and restrained path to that growth, which doesn't overburden the densest neighborhoods in our city, but rather encourages investment and growth in those communities, but especially in communities which have been ignored by the markets up to this point because of market failures and systemic racism. The three amendments are these, in order of, in opposite order. The amendment three relates to the rear yard requirement, and it's, the goal there is simply to align for R8 properties deeper than 80 feet or deeper, to align, right now it's 20 and 25 for rowhouses and multifamily respectively, the bill proposes down to 12. My amendment proposes 16 because for the larger, the deeper R8 properties, because 16 represents the 20%, they would have 80% lot coverage, and 20% of 80 feet is 16 feet, and therefore that would be kind of the bare minimum on like an 80-foot lot, the bare minimum to do the lot coverage at 80%, which would be the max allowed, would be 16 feet. And so I'm just trying to align those two numbers to match the increased lot coverage that we have there. So that's that, it's pretty straightforward. I was trying to find a number that actually connected to the rest of the bill and made sense, and so for me, 16 aligned with that 80%, and there we go. The second amendment relates to adjust lot coverage for R8 properties that are less than 80 feet deep, and this is really simple. The bill currently, the current law calls for smaller R8s, it's 80% lot coverage, and for larger, it's 60%. This bill jumps both of those 20% to 80 and 100, with 100 being for the smaller lots. Just in an R8 neighborhood, my recommendation is that 100% by right on a smaller lot, just that 100% by right shouldn't ever be the thing. There's plenty of properties that have 100%, those are specific things, they're corner properties, there's something unique about them, they fall into the categories that ought to go through the zoning board and ought to be approved, but 100% by right on small lots just, to me, isn't appropriate in R8, absent some special condition, and so I'm proposing 90% for those smaller lots instead of 80, instead of 100. The bigger, the bigger, kind of more impactful aspect has to do with the number of dwelling units allowed per square feet of lot area. The current law has 750, the current bill proposes dropping it down to 500 per single dwelling unit. I'm very supportive of creating far more flexibility for property owners in R8 areas around the number of allowable units, and resulting increase in population density and vitality. I think 400 looks, looks good on a chart. I think if you actually apply it to the lot sizes and the 72,000-plus R8 properties in the city, I think 500 actually isn't the right number. I think it's convenient for a zoning table, I don't think it's actually aligned with the kind of uses and the kind of distribution of property sizes we see in the city. So it results, what I'm trying to say is 500 rather than 575, which I propose, results in a potential increase in multi-unit properties far beyond what a community could possibly sustain, especially communities which are already the most dense in the entire city. For example, right now, the, so at 575, we're still massively increasing. So right now, across the city of Baltimore and the 72,000 units, 61,000 are by lot area are limited to one unit, and the remainder are, 11,000 are multi-unit by lot area. The bill before us would drop that number from 61,000 single units down to 33,000, and so then you'd have 38,000 more or less multi-unit by right, which is a huge increase. In each of the categories, two, three, four, five units, it's at least tripling, if not quadrupling, the number of R8 properties that fall into that, into that, into that lot size, right? So tripling or quadrupling two, three, and four, and five units by right. 575, this is the number I'm proposing, which I think would serve well, more than doubles all of those categories, right? So for, more than doubles the number of two units by right, three units by right, four units by right, five units by right, which seems like a pretty substantial change to the flexibility and availability and the potential, potential density of our communities without tripling or quadrupling. I think doubling is a very aggressive, very, I don't see how that could be seen as anything other than a very aggressive approach to adding flexibility to R8 neighborhoods. And I would suggest that by the time we get to 500, we're getting pretty, pretty far away from actually kind of what would be reasonable. The last thing I'd say about this is, I, kind of, the data we have to look at to see like, okay, what is this, what is this allowing? And we can look back at, say, the last five years of convergence, multifamily conversions, which is what we're talking about, that came before the city council. There were 51, only 51 in the last five years, so about 10 a year, some higher, some lower. Under the current bill, 87% of them would be by right. Under my bill, 73% would be by right. So even the current bill before us, I mean, there are things that come before us that are so unique that even this more aggressive approach wouldn't have it be by right. There'd still be 13% that would still have had to come to the city council, or to BMZA one way or another. And that's fine, I think, I think making sure that 73% looking historically and then projecting the future would be by right is a pretty, is a pretty significant move to decreasing the workload on BMZA and on this committee, while also allowing us to focus on that 25% of cases that truly deserve our consideration. So that's the, that's the case for my three amendments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Parker. Do you, would you like to have these amendments considered individually or collectively?
I think individually would be great.
Okay, great. Would you like to make a motion on the first amendment?
Sure, I would move amendment number one, which is the last one I spoke about. Sorry about that, but that's the lot size, 575 per, per unit rather than 500 in the current bill.
Great. All in favor of this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Nay. Abstain? The amendment will not be recommended. Amendment number two? Would you like to make a motion on that?
Yes, I would move amendment number two, which is on the smaller R8 lots, moving from 100% to 90% lot coverage.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Nay. Abstain? Okay, the amendment will not be recommended. Amendment three?
I'd move amendment three, dealing, changing from 12 feet rear yard in R8s to 16.
Thanks. On this one, I'll personally say, I'm fairly agnostic about it, though. If I look at the specific calculation of 80 feet, as where, 80 feet or greater would require an 80%, or would limit to 80% lot coverage. And so for an 80-foot-deep property, at 80% lot coverage, I can cover 64 feet of that. And if I have a 79-foot property, I can cover 79 feet of that property. So that to me is a little incongruous, but a lot of, I think, what happened with the, this bill, is we were looking at some of the standards that exist, and looking at not making all of the changes possible, but some of the changes possible, and this category, I think, already had a standard for, for properties of a certain depth, in fact, it was the only category where there were, properties of a certain depth can have a certain amount of lot coverage, and properties of a different depth can have a different lot coverage. So I do acknowledge that there's like something incongruous about this, like a 79-foot property can have 79 feet covered, and an 80-foot property can only have 64 feet covered, and in fact, to get above the 79-foot-deep house that a 79-foot property could do, I would have to have a 100-foot-deep property at 80% lot coverage in order to have an 80-foot-deep house. This doesn't really make a whole lot of sense to me, but it is in keeping with the kind of scheme and the standard that we, that was already there, and I think that's something like worth taking up another day, because I guess there is something to say about, you know, a block that is all properties of one depth versus properties of a different depth. But what this does allow is that if I have a property 80 feet deep, and my maximum lot coverage of 64 of those feet is constrained such that the additional 16 feet must all be in the back, I can't set my house back off of the sidewalk just a little bit. If the rear lot line, if I'm allowed to have only a 12-foot setback in the rear yard, then I can set my house back four feet, which is in a lot of cases, like the depth of a set of staircase, you know, a staircase. And I don't necessarily think there's a critical difference between 12 feet in the rear yard versus 16 feet in the rear yard, but I do think like a tiny little setback, like four feet in the front, can make a difference in some cases. And so the text of the bill as it is allows that kind of flexibility, where with the amendment, there would not be that kind of flexibility. So that's what I have to say on that. Councilmember Gray, Councilwoman Blanchard want to hear your thoughts on this.
So me and Councilman Parker had a great conversation about this. As far as the setback, I understood the math, but I kind of conclude on where, where Councilman Dorsey, where he landed, but if this is what, generally, we can support this one. If we want, we can make the setback to 16 feet. I think it just makes sense mathematically, and this is something that we can work on another day, but to make the, make it conform across the board, I think this, I have no issue with this amendment.
Councilman Blanchard?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think to, to your point about what happens if it's not all in the rear of the property, it's a good point. Living in a row home neighborhood and representing a bunch of row home neighborhoods, you know, by far the most standard layout is the front of the, the row home goes to the front of the property, and then any extra space is either in the back or on the side, so. I think this is a, the situation you're referring to is less common, so.
Yeah, that's what I think also. That's why I'm like pretty agnostic about this and willing enough to go along with it. So we have a motion for the amendment. Any other comments on the amendment before we vote on it? Okay, all in favor of adopting this third amendment, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Abstentions? Great, we have just one nay vote from Councilwoman Middleton, and other than that, we, the amendment will be recommended favorable with the bill, if we put the bill favorable. I have an amendment here of my own. This addresses an inconsistency that was noted at the last hearing. On page three, strike in their entirities, lines 25 through 28, and substitute as in the table on the amendment that the members have. The existing text of the zoning code has one set of minimum lot requirements for multifamily housing in general, and a different, lower set for multifamily age-restricted, and the bill text lowers the general multifamily to a point that is actually lower than the existing age-restricted numbers, and that doesn't, that essentially removes the sort of, I think, incentive, I, you know, I'm not a mind reader, and I don't have all the facts from when these were created before, but I think that the intent was to incentivize age-restricted housing to some degree beyond general multifamily housing, and so if the multifamily housing is lower than the age-restricted, that incentive doesn't exist any longer. And not wanting to endeavor into a debate about what is an even further lower number than the proposed multifamily number that we could set the age-restricted to even lower than it, to maintain that incentive even with the new numbers, what this amendment does is just at least level the two and make age-restricted the same as the proposed new multifamily standard. I see Eric Tissot with his like finger on the trigger of that microphone, so I'm going to go to Eric just real quick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, or good morning still, I guess technically, members of the committee. You're correct, Mr. Chair, the intent behind lower requirements for housing for the elderly was to recognize their generally lower impacts on the communities around them, and allowing increased density, especially since, you know, the typical household sizes were smaller. So that was the rationale for giving them a density bonus, as it were. Just apologies that we didn't catch that mismatch on our own. I think it's a reasonable middle step to set them at parity until we can figure out if any further changes are required. We also noted that typically parking requirements were lowered for housing for the elderly, that's a separate bill, but that same logic applies, so I think that's a reasonable intermediate step.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the committee, or, well, I'll, I'll move the amendment favorable, and now are there any questions or comments about the amendment before we vote on it?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I have one.
Ms. Blanchard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that, I'm glad this was caught, and I agree with Mr. Tissot, something that is a really important aspect of the entire housing package, is that we're creating more opportunities specific, more housing flexibility specifically for seniors, and making sure that we are not incidentally making it harder for, or having an added burden in age-restricted housing is, is a very sensible thing, so I'm glad this was caught.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor of this, adopting this amendment, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Abstain? Great, this amendment is voted favorable. And now we will again vote on the bill to make a recommendation on the bill to the full council. We have several amendments that we have adopted today and at the previous hearing. All in favor of, I'm sorry, Councilman Gray, would you like to make the motion on the bill? We have a motion from Councilman Gray to move the bill with amendments. We'll do a roll call.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey's a yes. Vice President Middleton?
No.
Miss Middleton, no. Mr. Bullock?
Yeah.
Mr. Bullock's a yes. Matt Porter is absent. Mr. Parker?
Uh, Mr. Parker?
Yeah.
Mr. Parker is yes. Mr. Blanchard?
Yes.
Mr. Blanchard is yes. Mr. Gray? Mr. Gray is a yes. Five yes, one no, and one absent. This bill will be recommended favorable with amendments to the full city council on Monday at the next council meeting. Okay, we have our final bill of today. Council Bill 250065, zoning, eliminating off-street parking requirements. Again, this bill was heard previously, was voted previously, was brought back to committee. We have additional agency reports that we are here to hear, um, and we will go straight to those agency reports, uh, beginning with the Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Christian McNeil, DOT, we stand by our favorable bill report.
Do would you like to say anything else about that report while we're at it?
Sure.
Can you pull the microphone closer to you speak up a little bit so we can hear you better?
Yes. Do you want me to read our position for?
You don't have to read it in its entirety, but if you want to summarize it somehow?
Okay. Uh, this legislation repeals uh minimum off-street parking requirements while maintaining parking maximums. Uh, the benefits are clear. It reduces the amount of land and costs devoted to automobile storage, making development more flexible and affordable. It encourages resident residents, excuse me, to choose more sustainable transportation options, reduce congestion and emissions, and it supports higher population density, which is critical for high-quality public transit.
Great, thank you. BMZA report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tyler Chanel, Mayor's Office, uh, on behalf of the BMZA. Um, I'll just summarize the last, what, page of the BMZA's report, uh, which is essentially based on the board's expensive extensive experience with uh park conveyance requests. Uh, the compelling evidence from peer cities demonstrates quantifiable benefits and the alignment of this legislation with the city's comprehensive planning goals. The Board of Municipal and Zoned Appeal Staff respectfully recommends a favorable report on uh City Council Bill 250065. Uh, and they go on to uh provide just a couple high-level benefits of the bills, their economic and development benefits, there's equity and social benefits uh attached here, uh, as well as obviously the administrative benefit um of, you know, essentially updating our uh, you know, our codes and and our laws in the city to to, you know, keep up with the times of where we are today.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee for DOT or BMZA about their reports? Okay, um, we will go to. Zach? Were there any additional amendments for this bill? We will go to public testimony, um, for comments on these reports. Um, and again, considering some people signed the form but maybe missed the checkboxes for saying that they specifically wanted to testify, I will just read down all of the names on here just so that nobody feels like I've skipped over them. So we will begin with Mr. John Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Tell us who you are. Pull that microphone up a little bit and we'll give you two minutes.
I would like to introduce myself as a very satisfied constituent of Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton. She's been a wonderful representative for me and for the neighborhood. I might point out that the Baltimore City Historical Society had a meeting Saturday and honored her husband, late husband. So she comes from a distinguished family and I'm very grateful. I also have clients who have known uh Councilman Blanchard and his work with the uh that community, and I know of his great work. I'd like to make the point that in conjunction with the expansion of single-family zoning to multifamily zoning, this bill might have a very disastrous effect. I live in a little neighborhood street and basically with the single-family homes, almost the entire street is occupied by cars. When you double that, it'll be a problem. I would also suggest that this will create opposition to multifamily housing. I don't deny at all that multifamily housing is very important, but one of the considerations in creating it is it's going to be its effect on adjacent neighborhoods. And if the effect of on adjacent neighborhoods is not to have parking, that will create opposition.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
I might make one final point. With the best of intentions, I don't deny this, don't deny the intention of the sponsor, what you're doing is changing the whole structure of zoning in Baltimore City. You have four bills before you which are doing this. This is a crazy way to go about it. You really ought to do a comprehensive zoning so that you can consider all of these in context of taking into effect one or the other and the total effect. The further advantage of comprehensive zoning would be that you would require written notice to every owner, which has not taken place here. I've been practicing law in Baltimore, zoning law, for a long time. I can guarantee you that most of the communities do not know of these bills. They do not know. Comprehensive zoning was done, transformed Baltimore, took four years to get through. These bills are going through in months.
Thank you.
There's just not the public knowledge. Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Ted Comas?
Here I am again. This bill ties in with the last bill, adding more units, parking. What are you gonna do? What are you gonna do with the parking on the street? What about the seniors? What's gonna happen to them? Where are they gonna park? So you so you're adding more units. Parking on the street is over overcrowded already, you know? So I'm totally, totally against this. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Comas.
Okay, just the same, um, the neighborhood I live in is.
Tell us, tell us your name again.
Oh, my name is Betty Leek again.
Thank you, Ms. Betty.
All right, um, we having this, I'm having the same problem with the parking. We have to move our cars twice, oh, twice a week, and the only free day we have is Wednesday, and some of my neighbors, they have three and four cars in a family, and the parking is very, very, very tight and very hard to park. And if you, you know, and you've been trying to get, um, what you call it, when the old, when you get a certain age and you want to, um, you know, the sign up for not to park because of your disability, and um, we've been trying that with certain neighbors, and it's been like years that they haven't gotten, um, approval yet. So the parking is very, very hard also. And um, and I'm against, um, um, we should be lifted because, like I said, we have to, if you go away and go on vacation, you will get tickets, and our tickets are $52 when you, um, you know, park in where you don't suppose to park at. And it's 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 just very congested.
So just.
Thank you, Ms. Leek.
Okay, okay.
Just to provide a quick point of clarification, because of street sweeping, they have to move their cars from side to side.
Yeah.
And so parking.
Mr. Washington?
Sorry.
I didn't have you test signed up to testify. If you wish to testify as part of Ms. um Leek's testimony, you can, but I'm not going to call you up separately again.
No, I.
Oh, no.
Okay, great.
Yeah, excuse me, because that's what I thought that you understood.
Yeah.
That about the sweepers and we have to move our cars twice a week.
I got you.
And that's kind of hard.
Yeah.
And if you go away or something like that, you you, you know, you'll get a $52 ticket because you're gonna be on the wrong side of the street. And then if you, um, like I said, you don't want nobody else to be moving your cars, so you can't park your car in front of your door if you go away for a couple, you know, days and stuff, and it's very hard.
Got you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Joan Floyd here. Um, as I stated before, the the Department of Transportation is legally required under the code to estimate future parking needs, and that's a data-driven thing. So if that isn't part of their reporting on this bill, then they haven't done, there there's a missing piece here. But also, I, uh, Mr. Chair, I want to point out that the required notification, public notice of this hearing, of these hearings, did not actually state that they were going to be limited to particular type of testimony, so I'm just going to continue for a second here. As Mr. Murphy said, he's absolutely right. These bills are part of a package, and they they real this, these ideas that people have that they want to, you know, um, they want to change the zoning code, it needs to be part of something comprehensive. And there's an additional part of that. There's a missing context for these 64, 65, 66, and that's the state accessory dwelling unit mandate that is over at this time in the spring. The state of Maryland effectively ended single-family zoning, but they did it in a way that is limited and measured and targeted. And it's a mandate, and yes, it applies to Baltimore City. They had to specially amend the land use article to make sure that it applies to Baltimore City. So that is going to require, like it or not, agree with it or not, that's what has been done. That's now state law. It's going to require amendments to the zoning code for the bulk regulations and the uses. The state is not requiring us to massively increase density in neighborhoods that are already dense enough, and the state is not requiring us to ditch all parking requirements. These things need to be looked at in context. The bills need to be tabled, and then something else needs to happen, a different process needs to happen, one that is responsive to and inclusive of the the residents of the city in Baltimore. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, I once again want to go on record that I think it's a failure to perform your duty to post a report the day before the hearing and then limit a hearing to testimony on the content of those reports. I I pick up what uh Mr. Murphy said, and that is that these bills will have many unintended We didn't put parking restrictions on to add to the cost of housing. We put parking restrictions on to try to preserve the quality of life in various neighborhoods. There are 276,000 registered vehicles in Baltimore City, 9,000, more than, and an additional 9,000 registered in the state of Virginia that reside in Baltimore City as well. Those cars are not evenly distributed across all neighborhoods. We already have many, many residential neighborhoods because of the density of housing that are seriously impacted by overcrowded streets. So to completely just blanket eliminate off-street parking or or parking requirements and think that everyone is going to go to the street is absurd. There's been no analysis done. Now, I heard mentioned, it said, uh, we've talked about the previous bill, that in the past five years, there's only been five conversions that took place. You can't base the what you say in the past and project it forward because this bill and the previous bill will dramatically change the landscape and the permits that are going to be applied for, for multifamily housing, for larger lot sizes, and totally eliminate any kind of off-street parking on these developments. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Michelle LaFabe?
Nope.
Okay, he is not in the room. I will go to Ms. Betty Bland Thomas.
Uh, good afternoon, everyone. I'm here again um to oppose this bill. I I also support, well, as I said, not enough community engagement has occurred. I want an audience with the mayor because on his platform on reelection, he spoke, I think, very eloquently about his support for community engagement, and this has not occurred on these several bills. I support these bills being, this bill in particular, be tabled for further opportunities for community engagement. And let me say something compassionately. I waited half my life for you people to grow up to protect us. You're disappointing me. I'm not one to get a bike or scooter to go to the market, to pick up my friends, to go some other place to enjoy the space. What's happening here is that you're implying for me to get on a bike and/or a scooter, other choices of transportation. Where are my options? Where are my choices in this bill? It's going to affect churches, and Zach and I had a chance to meet with several pastors whose churches do not have parking, and we're trying to keep the church in the community. We support religion. We support churches being in our neighborhood because they're the only historic existing buildings left in our community, so we want them. It's also going to affect markets. We don't have a market in our immediate area because with this plan for off-street parking, it doesn't, it's not conducive for a market to be in the neighborhood where people want to use their cars to go to the market to pick up their groceries. Um, it's going to affect schools, more density of traffic. If you live in South Baltimore, you came out your house, I think, around 8 o'clock, Zach. Hanover Street is back-to-back traffic. People coming out of the area of, um, uh, I guess they're coming from, oh, it's going to affect churches, schools, increased traffic. Our streets are still the same, congestion, pollution, and most importantly, quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bland Thomas. Uh, I'll call one more time for Mr. Umoja. Okay, we will go to our online testimony. Ms. Deb O'Neal, we have you online again.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You have two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have been following basically the same bill now for three different uh sessions of in the past, too. It was combined with the other bills on reducing space and expanding stuff. And, you know, as a member of the RPP Advisory Board, which opposes this, we have asked repeatedly for the city to do data collection and analysis to back up the underlying assumptions that are driving this bill. Y'all have had youth to do that, and yet we see this bill again without that research having been done. It's discouraging because it looks like y'all just want to pass it no matter what, and that's concerning also. Um, I was at the hearing for the last planning session, and I actually heard someone in planning say. planning say, "Well, first, we have to increase the tax base, and then we'll fix the public transportation system." You are going to break this city if you're wrong. People need to be able to get around. People need to be able to go to jobs outside of the city. People need to be able to get to work, get to their business, get to their social events. We do not have a public transportation system that facilitates that. And I am 73, and I want to reiterate what Betty said. You are going to drive people like me out of the city because you are giving us no options. So when you talk about wanting to encourage diversity, I'm apparently not part of the diversity you want to encourage. I support everything in opposition that's been said. I thank my fellow citizens for showing up to speak today. That said...
Thank you, Ms. O'Neal. Jed Weeks?
Members of the committee. Sorry, you got me?
We can hear you, yes.
All right, great. Thank you, Chairman Dorsey, members of the committee. Again, I just wanted to reiterate that over 90% of the public testimony received is in support of this legislation, and the sponsor himself was elected in an incredibly dense neighborhood, talking about introducing and passing legislation like this, and so I think it really does reflect the intent of voters. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, we have one other person who didn't sign the form, but they're in the chat, asking if they can speak. We will go to that person. Okay, Mariaso Oo? Oh?
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You have two minutes.
All right, thank you. I would also like to say I am in opposition to this bill. I know that the one guy comes on and says 90%. I'd like to know what the numbers are, 90%. If you're talking, you know, 10 people, that's, you know, like, nine people out of one. But anyway, regardless of that, as everyone else has said, I have concerns about what it will do to the quality of life here in Baltimore City. I know that the city has lost, you know, residents before, and that, you know, there was a slight uptick. But what is important to, the city also has a tax base of people who own, and you're making decisions that are gonna have ripple effects to people's quality of life. And when you're going up head and head against Baltimore County, where people don't have to worry about parking, and you're now saying, hey, there's no parking restrictions, we're gonna make people have, you know, like, let developers by right do what they wanna do with these houses, put a bunch of people in here, they don't even have to meet off-street parking requirements, and now we're gonna all have to fight for parking. You are setting up a storm that you will probably not be in office to really see, because we have term limits now. So like, you're making a problem, you're making a mistake. I've been in this city since I was 17 years old. I came for school. I'm one of the people who stayed after school, who bought my house here, who's been a homeowner for almost 20 years. And I have, I have struggled with parking, and I live in a part of the city that's slightly less dense than, say, Canton, Fells Point, and other places. But we have big houses, and our houses are the ones that people target for, hey, we wanna put three or four people in there. And nowadays, a regular family, a single-family home, may come with two to three or four cars, and the streets are not set up for that. And so it feels very one-sided, short-sighted, to have decided and put through very quickly these decisions that we are all gonna have to live with. And, you know, I am still of an age where I can sell this house, I've been in it 20 years, I have, but I fight for the city because I believe in the city. I think it is an amazing place, and I want to see the type of thoughtful legislation that continues to allow it to have the ability for growth, but also the ability to support people who want to live here full-time, not as renters, but as owners. So I please implore you to consider the impact, and, you know, I know where Ryan Dorsey lives, and the houses are big, but they're very far apart. But these row houses are not far apart, but are big. They can hold a lot of people. There's space for one car.
Thank you. We appreciate your testimony. Okay, that concludes our public testimony on this bill. There are no further amendments to the bill other than what was voted in our previous vote, and so we will again vote on a committee recommendation. Councilmember Blanchard, would you like to move the bill favorable with amendments?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would briefly like to make a quick comment that I should have made in response to the BMZA's report.
Great.
Earlier on, but I just wanted to point out what I think was a really thoughtful, thorough report from the BMZA. But the last page, when it talks about considerations and mitigation strategies, we have been looking really actively into how to reform the RPP to be better prepared to actually manage residential parking for our residents in the city of Baltimore. As you know, I think several of the committee members know, that is something I am very serious about and actively working on. The other two thoughts on here as well are things that I am interested in looking into. So I think these are great points and really drives home the idea that there are plenty of appropriate ways to manage the parking demand in the city, and through our zoning code, by making it harder to have housing, is not something that I support. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You move the bill?
I move the amendment.
The bill favorable with amendments?
Yeah, I move the bill favorable as amended.
Great, we'll take a roll call vote on the bill favorable with amendments.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Vice President Middleton?
No.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Mr. Gray? Mr. Blanchard?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
We have five in the affirmative, one opposed, and one absent. The bill will be recommended favorable with amendments to the full city council at its next meeting on Monday. That concludes the business of the Land Use and Transportation Committee today. Thank you.